Okay, good morning. It is nine o'clock this morning, so it is nine o'clock on Thursday, December 22nd, 2016, and I'm called by the county commissioners board today. Today we have Hallie Bass from the Thursday District. We will be in the case. Please stand your main standing.
Father, our country is divided, and if we're honest with ourselves, our own city and counties are just as divided right here. Give us all humble hearts and open minds to hear each other and to be open to other people's positions and ideas. Father, we're so thankful for those who make decisions in this room and those who serve, and give them a sense of your justice, a sense of your mercy, the wisdom, the balance, the two. Father, we're reminded this time of year that we're waiting for that good news of great joy, which is for all people everywhere, and even now, we're just days away from welcoming your peace and your presence. Glad that we do so. Amen.
The Texas flag is the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal, liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, that's the reason to be Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, before we get started this morning, for those of you who did not know, we had a Christmas tree contest this year, and it was quite fun. We did the judging yesterday, and I would announce the winners right now, just for the sake of it, because it was fun. And it's Christmas, and I wish I had a drum roll, but little drummer boy is busy today. So first place, we had two different categories, classic and originality. And in the classic Christmas tree, the winner is the county parks office. They had Mr. Snowman, and it was really, really cute, and really, really, really pretty. So y'all get the first place, and you get a pizza. And that's just one pizza. I totally love that place for that. And the second place in the classic was the tax office, and they had a really cute tree with the trains going around at Old Village and Holy Creek. And then the originality, the auditor claimed that first prize. It was actually a Christmas tree, a Darth Vader Christmas tree. It was really, really pretty. Yeah, we had pictures of all of them, including the newsletter. And then second place was the hot check department, and it was really, really cute. It was fun, and everybody had a really good time doing it, and you can tell that they enjoyed doing what they were doing. Anyway, so congratulations to all of you. Okay, number one on the agenda is recognition of minutes from the December 12th, 2016, part of the community council meeting. Any changes or additions? Not so long ago. Number two is the vouchers. To consider an act of approval of the payment of vouchers consists by the category of the office in December 7th, 2016, or December 14th, 2016, check numbers 172, 509 through 172, 715, and wire transfers 826 through 833, in the amount of $3,277,499.43. Make a motion that we approve the vouchers today. Have a motion in the second. I'll pay for that right there. Insurance report, is Kay here today? Is there anything unusual or about the same? Thank you. So, everybody, honest. Treasurers report, on the end, if you want to speak on that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
By the way, you came in a squeaked in a third place.
We're a baby department.
We did the Tigris tree, but it was the cutest.
We participated.
You did.
It was fun, and thanks for doing that. That's cool. Okay, busy week. Tax season has officially started, and so this morning, our AMB checking account, we have $12,788,414.32, and we're earning 83 basis points. Texas class, we have $4,48,510.17, and we're earning 90 basis points. Tax pool, we have $399,938.65, earning 47 basis points. Tax pool prime, we have $51,488.50, earning 86 basis points. And all of those totals will change. This week, we did, we received $3 million like Tuesday, and yesterday, we received another $4 million from the tax office, so the dollars are beginning to come in, and it's going to get very busy. And we still have the $5 million seeders, and so our total cash this morning is $22,288,351.64. Our bank balance, which is all totals for every account for Potter County, not just the general fund, was $28,815,692.65. We are currently collateralized at $40 million to help cover whatever money's come in with taxes, and they will increase that to 50, so that they want us to keep at least a $10 million in the general fund, and that gives us some leeway to move money back and forth and make sure that we are covered.
Any questions?
I do have a question. Carrie, the percentage that rolls from the budget that just completed into these fund balances that came on site, I know that's a percentage you can watch from year to year to monitor spending. What, are we, are we at a point where we know that number, or is it still closing the books?
We're still closing the books, but it's in excess of 25%.
In excess of 25%, which is an increase, is that correct?
It is.
Okay, number five, tax increment investment fund. Here, report on the tiers request associated with the Foxville building, and adaptive reviews as residential units look at the work of the council. Does one of we have any J. Ball groups that want to touch that?
Good morning. Thank you for having me this morning. It's my first time presenting to you also, so take it easy on me. I'll try to keep it very brief and kind of hit the hot shots of this presentation. This particular request came to the tiers board regarding the property at 1004, Scott Tyler. This is actually a rehabilitation project utilizing a historic building that's there on site. The property owner in this case has worked very closely in order to take benefit of the historic tax credits available to this property, and therefore has all of the requirements and will continue to follow compliance moving forward with both the National Parks Service as well as the Texas Historical Commission. This project has also gone through the downtown Amarillo urban design review process and has been approved by that related board as well, and that will happen before the tiers consideration of the project. The plan for this project is approximately 16,000 square feet of living space. That will be divided up into 13 different apartments with a mix of one to two bedrooms, and the estimated construction cost on the project is $2.7 million. We also included in your background information both the term sheet that summarizes the information on this request, as well as a letter to you all from Scott Bittling, who is the chair of the tiers board, sort of outlining the consideration that they went through and the discussion that ensued at the tiers board meeting, which culminated in a recommendation of approval on this project. This map shows the location of this particular property as it falls within the tiers boundary. And this is a photo of the building in its existing state. Again, this was originally utilized for an auto care center, one of the first in Amarillo, it was a full-service auto care center, and so therefore, in order to meet again the THC and the NPS standards for historic preservation and rehabilitation, the exterior of that building will very much remain intact. Here's a rendering that was presented to the tiers board by the property owner that shows what that will look like upon completion of the project. As far as the numbers and facts and figures that were discussed by the tiers board, the request by the applicant was the 90% tax rebate through 2036. Based on the timing of this project, that will be probably about 18 years worth of the tax abatement, and then they also required, or sorry, requested $250,000 in order to be a reimbursement cost that would go towards public improvement. The tiers board funds at this time have seen a lot of different requests that have been granted, and so the tiers board was somewhat limited, and instead of the $250,000, approved a $50,000 reimbursement towards this public improvements. The board unanimously voted in favor of this request with a 7-0 vote, and that does include, of course, your three representatives, though we're all in attendance on this request. And with that, if you have any questions, we can certainly talk about those.
AJ, I do have a couple of questions. The first one, with the 90% tax rebate through 2036, could you provide what that aggregate value is, that dollar amount?
I'm sorry, we did not figure that out.
Is that something that we could get?
That's something that we could get for you, if you'd like, yes.
And then, is there a reason that this one qualifies for both? I was looking back at some of my tiers improvements, if you will. Most of the approvals that have been given to these projects are either a rebate or a grant, is what I've been calling them. That might not be the right terminology, but the rebate or the grant. I couldn't find in any of my background, any that received a both, but this one is slated for both, the rebate and the reimbursement, but just find the grant, sorry.
Being near to the city, I can't necessarily answer what's been done to us, but they are eligible for both. There are no restrictions as far as what is requested, so long as they provide the required application information, and the board is satisfied with the level of presentation and stuff like that.
I understand what we talked about is the $50,000 grant would come through the facade money that the Center City takes care of. And so that was my understanding, that's where that $50,000 came from.
They have also sought Center City funding and will also be receiving that, so this would be a separate request for $50,000 that would come out of the 15, 16-year budget for the tiers board.
So basically, you're saying that would be an additional?
That's correct.
Would you turn the mic on, Alfonso?
Oh, the most they can get on the facade grant is $50,000, is what I understand. It's all right. And I mean, remembering, remembering wrong, so the $50,000 probably is an addition, because they did ask for the $200,000. And we didn't have the funds for that, so we did grant the $50,000 plus the 90%, 90% tax rebate on the increment of what they're paying.
That's correct. I see Michelle back there. Michelle, on the tip fund, where these dollars come from, how healthy is that? I'm remembering some time ago that we really were being very conservative with what was allocated based on some of the commitments that have already been made over the years.
That's correct. They have a targeted fund balance, and not do they operating their, they're exceeding that. Also, these dollars come from their budget dollars, and they have that budgeted amount, and then the facade grant actually came from last year's dollars, so they're, they're well within their budget. And one other point that was made during the meeting is that this is residential, and that was one area that they had not met their targets in their original plan, so the board was very interested in proving dollars to get that residential.
There's no concern about the 90% as far as where that money comes from, because that's money that's already been paid as taxes by this property owner. We just rebate back 90% of what the increment increase will be to the property owner. So there's, if there's no money there, they haven't paid it, so they won't get it, but if they pay it, then they'll get 90% of the increase.
That's correct, and the $50,000 is a reimbursement also, so if they spent less than $50,000 in public improvements, they would only be eligible for that portion of that.
And so Commissioner, maybe you know the answer. With the $2.7 million construction cost, I'm trying to get in my hands around how many incentives they are receiving. Certainly, I can see the $50,000, I'm hearing of another incentive with Center City, and then whatever this aggregate 90% is. I don't know what the end dollar amount is that they're receiving for a $2.7 million construction.
Well, they're eligible for some tax relief from, because they are, they are historically designed, and so that depends on income and things like that, so nobody knows that figure yet. These other figures, the 90%, there was an estimate, I don't have it in front of me, but it's, it's going to be totally over, what, nine, ten years, is it? Twenty?
Probably about 18 years, about 14 years.
Yeah, 18 years, it's going to be less than $100,000, somewhere around. As I remember.
And then, one more question that I had, AJ. I was just kind of researching this developer that I just, I wasn't familiar with the name, Triple Play Partners, and it looks like they're a fairly new organization, kind of established just on my novice research, so take that for what it's worth, in October of 14. So do we know, I see, I think Mr. Jennings referenced as the owner. Do we know who these owners are?
Gary Jennings is not our, his wife is the other partner in this endeavor, and they have been quite involved, they were unable to be here today, but they've been in all of the other hearings and meetings regarding this project. My understanding is the partnership was formed and, and hold for this particular project, to get this up and running.
And are there any other owners that we need to be, that they're the sole owners of this development?
Dr. Harry Jennings and his wife Sally are the owners, and as Mark said, they purchased this in 19. What is it?
They purchased, they purchased, I missed that phrase.
They purchased that building. What is the standard, is the name, uh, number?
Sorry. They, and I'm sorry, I don't have that with me. They submitted a table that shows the anticipated rent rolls. Each unit is a different size, and so there are 13 different sets of numbers projected out in the future. I believe they range from around $850 a month to about $1,800 a month. But again, those are estimates at this point. They'll be refining that as they work through the process of the development project.
They were very much in line with the apartments on hand that just developed, and so that's where they got their figures, how much were squared that they would charge for.
The one with the big wall? No, no, this is one right off straight to the. Oh, the lots, the lots, okay. What, what was that rebate? I don't remember it being 90%.
They did not ask for any.
They just, they just asked, they got one piece.
They had, they had.
The grant.
For land screen.
And other than them requesting both, was there a reason? I'm thinking of those that have already gone through the tiers process and approval, and I would be shocked if some of those didn't request both. Like, there was a reason that they weren't allotted both, that they would have known they were eligible for both a potential improvement grant and a rebate.
So the application outlines everything they're eligible for, so is there a layout of that application packet? They have a list of everything that they can request?
And nothing's changed over the years? And I'm looking at Michelle too, for some historical?
Not on the application.
Okay. Well, if we could get a list, a holistic list of what the rebate will be, that would be helpful. I mean, I certainly know the city council will discern this, and this will be there finally approved.
Okay, are we supposed to double this today? Or no?
It's just that if any of us want to make a comment, you need to send it to the city council.
Okay. Number six, neighborhood planning program, addressing this event, areas initiative to hear report, make a recommendation on the North Heights plan. AJ, you're still up.
Thank you. So we shared with you all the link to the draft plan, which has been listed on the website for about a six to eight week period now. It is a lengthy document, and of course, we can't cover them all today. I hope to just start by giving you all the history on the project, reminding you where this project started, and kind of walking you through the process we went through with the neighborhood, and then finally, kind of discussing what happens moving forward, what types of actions will be involved in this process. So again, earlier this year, the city council went through an extensive process that culminated many things, including the blueprint for Amarillo. Of that blueprint, one of the elements was this community counts program, which really was an initiative to take a closer look at some of the key parts of the community that might necessarily need different types of reinvestment and study, not just taking the planning per se, but taking that kind of comprehensive look that the city did when they looked at their city's comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2010. So that could encompass a number of things from public safety to infrastructure improvements, economic development, land use planning. There's a whole list of things that sort of fall under the umbrella of this planning program. And so this slide shows the process that we've undertaken. It's a typical planning process. It is cyclical, and you'll notice the vagina end to the process. So the intent is for us, over time, to continue to move forward with this, make adjustments, and continue to keep the document as fresh as possible. So of course, this started with us going through the data collection process, the goal setting process with the neighborhood, going through an identification of challenges, goals, opportunities, putting together sort of a list of actions that were necessary to carry out all of those goals and strategies and challenges and opportunities. And then you'll see with the red arrow there, we're at the adoption stage of this plan. Moving forward, there's an implementation phase, some ongoing performance evaluation, and then that cycle can begin again as often as necessary to, again, keep the document fresh and then have it be responsive to what's happening in this particular neighborhood. In the center of the slide, you notice that there is a public participation piece, and that, of course, is probably the most important element of this process, and it is something that is encompassed within each and every step. So the neighborhood meeting process started in February of this year. There was a large kickoff meeting, there were well over 100 people that were in attendance at that meeting. City staff provided representatives for a number of city departments to have available, whether it was the police department, the parks department, a variety of people that could speak to particular questions and concerns that the neighborhood members might have. April, we had a workshop that really worked through, okay, now that we have sort of a baseline and understanding of the neighborhood, let's identify the goals, challenges, and opportunities that are present for this area. And so that was, again, a very participatory meeting with excellent attendance. The last workshop was in late October, and that was always sort of called our validation section. So we took everything that we had heard, we compiled that information, and had that available at the meeting, and asked the attendees to review what we had done so far and sort of validate that for us. Were we on the right track? How we correctly captured all of the input and things that they had told us? We have some excellent feedback at that meeting as well. Another major component of this process was the North Heights Advisory Committee. So at that very first kickoff meeting, there was a request for volunteers from people in the neighborhood who wanted to serve on this advisory committee and be very involved in the process at every level. They held a series of 12 different meetings throughout this year, and really drilled down in sort of finer detail than sort of some of the larger neighborhood workshops, the different goals, strategies, concerns, and we really tried to kind of focus and tailor those meetings into three different areas, which was the residents sort of asking themselves, what is something that we can do in this effort? What can the neighborhood do as a whole, and what can the city do to advance this effort? Out of those meetings, there were three areas of top priority that emerged. Those included the strength of the neighborhood and maintaining that. I'm sorry, I don't know why my slides advance themselves. The second group was looking at economic development and redevelopment, and then the third, looking at the transportation and mobility systems in the area and augmenting those. So moving forward, these are the steps for adoption. We had a large presentation to the neighborhood in late November. We presented this to the planning and zoning commission on Monday. We had some good discussion with them and some excellent feedback. We're presenting to you all, of course, today, and then we'll be taking this to the city council for adoption. That does require adoption by ordinance per Texas Local Government Code, and so we're anticipating to do that at the January 3rd and 10th meetings. So once that adoption is completed, this will become a chapter and an element of the city's comprehensive plan, which is utilized in future land use decisions as well as other types of strategic and policy decisions. There are three main sections to the neighborhood plan draft that we shared with you all. The first section is the existing conditions that we move into, sort of the assessment chapter, and then finally, the phasing and implementation, and we'll walk through those very quickly, so you get a sense for what those contain. So in the existing conditions section, this is a typical part of any planning process, whether it be at the corner or neighborhood level, or something as large as the city, county, or regional level, and that's essentially an exercise in data collection to create sort of snapshot of the area. What is the baseline so that we can measure our success moving forward? It largely involves things like demographics, so there's a lot of data, it's a very data-heavy chapter. We attempted to make that as user-friendly and reader-friendly as possible by expressing all of the data we collected in a series of maps that are fairly easy to read. Those sort of form the factual basis as well, that we pair with what we're hearing from the neighborhood that lead us down the road of strategic action. And so some of the sources that you'll see in that data come from largely the American Community Survey, which of course is an augmentation to the census that gives us one-year data. There are, of course, our other adopted city plans, surveys, and data that we incorporated, and then we also pulled some information from the Potter Ringel and Creeswell district. And so I've included just a few excerpts. This is by no means the extent of the entire chapter, just so you can get a sense of the types of maps that we've looked at. This first map is a map that we did on a survey basis as staff, going out and assessing each and every parcel within the North Heights study area, and determining what the current land use was in that area, because again, we're forming a baseline for identifying areas that we need to augment or modify and move forward. So that's one of the maps that you'll see in that chapter, closely followed by the future land use plan. This is really an excerpt of this area from the city's overall comprehensive plan. And so one of the things we'll be doing is comparing that with this next map, which is the zoning map, showing the existing conditions on the ground and what's allowed to be built in various parts of this neighborhood to identify if we need to be more proactive and maybe looking at some different zoning designations throughout the area that could then help leverage in sparks and redevelopment, reinvestment. One of the more compelling, I think, pieces is this particular map, for example. This was the street and sidewalk map, a section from our infrastructure section, and the red parcels, which you can see are kind of throughout the neighborhood, denote lots where there are no adjacent sidewalks. So we have identified that, for example, infrastructure investment for multi-mode transportation that's not necessarily car dependent is a big need in this area. So again, this series of maps, as you look through them in the plan, and I hope that you take the time to do that, really builds the case for why investment is needed in this area, what types of investment are needed in this area. So it's a very factual and logical way to start the process. Then we move into the second major section of the plan, which is really the assessment. This was really where the work, the lines shared the work was done with the advisory committee, as well as with the neighborhood as a whole at those public meetings that we talked about earlier. And this is just an excerpt from that to show you the structure basically of this part of the document. So again, we had three major areas of priority that were identified as a whole, and for every priority area, that's broken down into a series of goals. Each goal is broken down into strategies, and then those strategies are broken down into the action steps, which is essentially our checklist of things to do, what our work plan is for the area. And so to summarize, out of those three priority areas, the first one that would begin related to the strength and vibrancy of the neighborhood and maintain that moving forward, was broken down into three related goals. Those goals broken down into 12 objectives, and then there's 57 different things that we will need to do collectively in order to carry out that particular area. In the second priority area, again, we have goals, objectives, and actions that are outlined, and the same for the transportation and mobility systems. That takes us to the third major part of the document, in the ending part of the document, and what I think is probably most interesting for people that are reading it and have some sort of tie to that neighborhood, which is what are we going to do in order to make these things happen? And so that implementation section is broken down into a table format, so it's a lot easier to read, convey, and sort of condense that information in a way that makes sense logically. And so you'll see that same breakdown that we talked about just a moment ago, where you have an overarching priority area, you have a series of goals, those goals broken down into objectives, and then line by line, action steps that we must take. Those action steps are furthermore prioritized, so you'll see low, medium, or high, in this particular instance, this. particular instance, this infrastructure-related action is deemed a medium priority. And we also estimate the time that it would take and who the responsible parties are. So in some of these cases, the responsible parties might be the neighborhood or neighborhood association. It might be a combination of the neighborhood and the city. It might be a combination of the city and the county. Or it could be a series of city departments, as in this example, which specifies that our capital improvement section, our public works section, our planning section are responsible for this particular step. So the intent is really that last part of the document to have a checklist and to-do list of what our work will be moving forward. And so we'll also be reexamining this as often as deemed needed. It's different for every type of plan. Sometimes that's annually, sometimes that's biannually. It could be every two to three years, in fact, in order to see where we're doing, what we're doing, what we've accomplished, what we've completed. And that provides the accountability that's necessary for the neighborhood to really support and buy into the plan long-term. And so this will be conversations that we'll have with you all as well as with the city council. And Kevin Eiers, again, sort of answering for the progress report on where are we? What have we accomplished? What's left to do? And of course, what resources do we need to carry those things out? So in utilizing and applying this plan moving forward, of course, a large part of it is dependent upon the city to utilize growth strategies, whether it be through land use regulations, development regulations, economic development opportunities. Policy-making will be a big part of this. It will also of course help us evaluate potential land use decisions as of course the city with a comprehensive plan, local government code does require us to make our decisions in accordance with this document. And then of course, lastly, but probably most importantly in many people's minds, really a starting point for those infrastructure and mobility, physical projects that we'll need to identify funding for moving forward. And so that's a very quick overview of a very lengthy document, but hopefully that gives you a good handle on the process that we've been through, what we looked at, and the final product for you all. Of course, we wanted to bring this report to you as you partnered very closely with the city on this effort. And because this is part of an overall planning program, we will be regrouping it after the first of the year. I think it's important for we to go forward to sort of assess what we learned from this process as a group, what went well, what didn't go so well, what was overlooked, and really put together a standardized process so that every neighborhood that we go into gets the same experience, gets the same level of detail and service, and we can make sure that those documents are issued and updated consistently. If you have any questions or comments, that's what we hear them.
AJ, would you help educate us on the bond proposition that did pass that involves this neighborhood?
Okay, well, I probably can't educate you fully. I came in after I think that happened, but there is somebody identified in that effort that could be utilized in this neighborhood or any other neighborhood that's part of this process. So it is not, I want to be quick to say that it is not going to fix all of our problems. There are funding sources within that bond that could be utilized for projects in this particular neighborhood or any future neighborhoods that we do planning in. Those funds can be utilized for specific projects. They can also be of course utilized, as we did with this case, in the support of carrying out this process, as there are of course expenses involved with the public engagement process, advertising process, and that sort of thing. So it's very open-ended, as I understand it, as to how those funds can be utilized as long as they are in the pursuit of this project. And I think of course, moving forward, we've heard a lot of comments from our commissioners at the planning and zoning level, as well as the neighborhood, as to where those funds come from for these projects. And so we've been quick to emphasize that while that is one potential source, it will not be the only source. This will also need to become part of our capital improvement planning efforts. We'll need to look at a variety of potential grant opportunities. We'll need to cobble together and be very creative in the way that we come up with funding for these. But I think the important thing to take away is that this becomes part of our evaluation process in each and every case.
I think a little sort of point of emphasizing that, I appreciate that as far as the commitment from not only public sources, the city and the county, but also from the neighborhood, the best friendship of those citizens that build there, it's going to be an effort of working together. It's just not singularly that it came on any particular point. And we know this has been a light area for this story for a number of years. And I'm excited to see that we're all kind of jumping into it together and going through our mission work design.
I want to publicly thank you AJ for seeing this kind of over the finish line and certainly Kelly Shaw, because when this started, it was a little bit of just a thought and an idea on what it could really land on. So pleasantly surprised with the outcome and the maps. And certainly thank you to the Commissioners Court with the $75,000 investment flexibility of not really knowing what it could look like. I'm very grateful for you taking time to come educate us because I think this is the outcome of that work. And so I want to thank you for allowing us that flexibility to really not have that frame worked down and just kind of teeing up the topic.
Well, thank you. I do need to, again, kind of echo those comments and note that our planning department's gone through a lot of changes in a very short period of time, but Kelly Shaw and Becky Beckham was also an integral part of this. They are now in different places and so they continue to, even though it's not their responsibility at this point, entertain phone calls and help give us feedback. So they were really committed to this project as well. I've seen that level of commitment in my short time here from the neighborhood all the way to the different entities that are involved. And I think it's very encouraging of all the neighborhood planning processes that I've been involved in. I was really impressed with this being the first one in the level of engagement that I can imagine on that.
And also to the first step, this is not just me, it's the North Heights Secretary of State, all quarters.
Correct.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I think the next ones slated are the Vodie Hall, East Ridge, and San Jacinto, I think in that quarter. So we're already kind of getting some initial boundaries down. That's always kind of, that was interesting to me as part of the process, is really our first topic is what is the boundary and what is the perception? Do people self-identify when that is the location? So I wouldn't have thought that on the outside going into it, that that would be the first thing we talked about.
We have a couple of young ladies in the back row there that they would like to comment. They're just here just to watch, or did y'all want to have anything to say about this neighborhood?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Mildred Dorton. My address is 2005 August 14th. And I would like to say from the beginning, it was awesome. I was not here for the ending, but the ending in human walks. And I'm so happy to see all the participation from Commissioners, Councilmen, because the neighborhood is truly grateful and truly in need. So as we work together, we can get it done. Thank you. Thank you, Mildred. Appreciate it very much.
And I want to applaud you and all the many others that are on the advisory committee working times and business hours to input their thoughts and how to work together to improve this community and just goes along with moving forward all quarters again. So that's how we do it.
Okay. Anything else on that subject?
AJ, do you need us to make a recommendation or a motion? No, I don't know. I know we had talked about what I need to, since this is the first one.
I think the council, yes, would appreciate a recommendation from you all. We'll share that as well as the planning and zoning conditions, recommendations to do them in January.
So my recommendation, put that straight up.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the North Heights Neighborhood Plan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just feel like you do the honors.
Okay, I have a motion. Thank you very much. Thank you AJ for such work.
I'm number seven, Potter County Melbonne Board, destination of county court law member, doesn't make part of county court law judge, who will serve on the bill for 2017. Every year we take turns with the county court law judge. This year it's Corkey Roberts. And at some time, I have advised her that she is on for next year. She has accepted, so it's done. I don't think we have anybody on it, do we? It's just a designation. Number eight, recognition of bond to recognize executed bond under the LGC. Section 262.011. I don't have anything in mind.
I'm sorry.
It is, I have the bond, it's been executed. Everything's good?
Yes.
Was it just to recognize one?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to take your word for that. Number nine, this is one of our favorite things we do every year.
It is. That's all the record, Judge.
I'm kidding.
We're recording. How times since it is this that, and I have got the original page of October 29th as the anniversary of the license. But if at all possible, I would love to see that we, the ladies for one leave, and I'm saying this because there are some residents in the area that have been wanting to get a print speed to this issue for quite some time and wanted to do the thing about town at this point, if at all possible.
Is that possible? Do you have anything?
I don't know what your family is.
Yeah, as I recall, and in general, since I've looked at our regulations, there is a timeframe to act, and if memory serves me, it's about 45 day timeframe now. And certainly I would be the last one to say you should discourage or not do everything to actually encourage residents to come and share their viewpoint on the business. I will say, your discretion in that regard is substantially limited unless there's evidence brought forward that they're in violation of the regulations, which we've heard none have received. It's, you know, the alternative is to wind up federal court. The management has shared inside.
Yeah, we'll say this last year we did this in September. They're already, I mean, they're already late. Who's got us? So, I don't know.
Let's see, 45 days, we may be within our parameter. We could confirm that while we go through the rest of the agenda. At least allow them time.
Sure.
Okay, yeah. So we'll just.
Yeah, hold on, I'll take it, I'll run upstairs and check.
Okay.
Let's see, let's see on this.
Anniversary date.
Where 60? 60, 60. You have a change?
Submitted to the center.
Submitted to somebody. Yeah. So let me, let me run upstairs and check that out.
Scott, the fee that's represented here, it's only 200 bucks. Who sets that?
Well, you could, you could choose to amend the regulations at any time. That's consonant with the regulations. You could choose to amend that. Now, so this year, obviously, it's just going to be 200 bucks, but we can, we're.
We had to do like $20,000.
Uh, probably not.
Do we get that on? To come in?
Yeah. We still.
Well, I like to sort of look at them.
Yeah, as I recall federal law on that, the fee we collect is what state law, for that matter. The fee has to reflect the expenses that go into not only consideration of the application, but also any enforcement and inspection efforts undertaken by sheriff's office. Under the regulations, sheriff's office has the authority to go in and inspect for compliance with our regulations as well as of course any violations.
Sheriff, I can inspect in the place. Just ask.
I'm sure everyone's clamoring for that. Yeah, let me run upstairs and check.
All right, we'll move on to number 10, renewal of contracts. Consider an act of renewal of contracts for the formal bid number 1099 dash 14 HVAC maintenance repair service renewed, Alan's toxic chemical. Now, there's no backup in here because this is only a renewal.
Yes, and we've talked to my candidate, he's satisfied with the services, so it's just a straight renewal.
Okay, so let me go ahead and read B, we'll just do the whole thing together. Full bid number 1098 dash 14 for plumbing maintenance repair service renewed, Alan's toxic chemical, 2117, 213118 as per bid contract. Look, that's sort of active, so any question?
I have one quick question, Judge Vicki. Are we expecting any price increases? I know sometimes in the renewal, there's a 2% tucked in there somewhere.
Yes, there's, it varies. We, that kind of the senior buyer, 1015ers, it's wrestling at about 2%.
Yeah, 2.5.
Okay, and then when this ends in 18, we'll go out full bid?
Well, this is our last year, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you want to comment on the HVAC?
What we're looking to do next year is pull out the HVAC and totally do away with that and put it under one of our other state contracts with TD Industries and just strictly have a plumbing outline motion.
How would I can do that?
I believe that we approved the contract FB 1099 dash 14 for HVAC and FB number 1098 dash 14 for plumbing maintenance with a strict statement.
I have a motion in second, I have a favor, it's right here. Number 11, formal proposal number 1135.6 awards to consider an act upon the award for proposal 1135 dash 16 food service for the food center, five-star correctional services contract beginning 2/11/17 for a three-year contract. We've arrived to establish an additional 2.1 renewals.
Yes, this was a new proposal. Last year was the last year renewal for five-star correctional. We did go out for formal proposal. This was a proposal not a bid, 1135 dash 16. And we made the recommendation as a committee, committee, it's a party set up, party, and the recommendation is to go and carry existing vendor five-star correctional services and you have in the backup of the actual evaluation. Sheriff Thomas, if you want to speak, I mean, if you have that, do that.
It's a part of the body.
You're satisfied with your work?
Yeah.
We did them for my law.
I think the backup was very helpful as well as the evaluation process.
Any questions?
In the future, it would be helpful on that score sheet, how it has the criteria one through six, to just to have what the criteria is. That would just.
Yes, and just, I thought about that too, Mercy, as I pushed Mercy again, because as I was looking at it, I said, oh yes, that would be helpful, but just to let you know, it's tied directly to the proposal, so they were identifying what that criteria is, what that was going to be to a certain state.
I make a motion that we approve the award of formal bid number 1135 dash 16 food service for detention center to five-star correctional services.
Second, I have a motion in second, all favor, it's right here. Number 12, vehicle transfers to consider an act upon the transfer of vehicles between various departments as follows. Potter County number 15842 dash 2002 Ford Expedition ELT from District Attorney to auction. Potter County number 20441, 2011 Chevrolet Express van from Sheriff's Office to facilities. Potter County number 17559, 2006 Ford Expedition from facilities to District Attorney's Office. And Potter County number 21570, 2014 Chevrolet 15 passenger van from Sheriff's Office to
Standard procedures, a couple departments are upgrading, other moving to normal auction.
Make a motion that we approve the transfer.
Second, for a quick question, we're not increasing the fleet. I mean, I like when I get carries more.
Also, one quick question as far as the facilities of vehicles moving over to the DA. Typically, normally those vehicles from facilities are pretty, they're all used out. You get some, I'm curious of what the DA is using for that vehicle.
This particular vehicle, we're giving up. We need a larger one with four seating because we put everybody in it, move it over, move them over here at night. That's the only reason we're giving it to them is larger.
And the DA had a 2002, is that what I'm hearing?
Sheriff, on the day they're on the 2014 15 passenger van, is that one of the vans you use for transportation to the mental hospital and whatever? So it's just more now?
It's pretty high mileage.
Okay. All right, I have a motion in second, all favor, it's right here. Zero, thank you very much. With 13, equipment purchase to consider an act upon the purchase of a Barracuda load balancer appliance in an amount of $19,746 from CDW that's G using DIR contract, Jason Patrick.
Good morning.
Good point.
Good point.
We've actually got this front down to fourteen seven fifty. So we got fourteen seven fifty this year. And this is a piece of equipment that's needed for the Tyler project in fourteen, District of Berks.
Where is that money coming from?
It's coming out of the budget numbers.
From this, but there's special accounts for the purchase or from our? It's actually coming from Cap and Projects, yeah, and part of this money is from the savings of the prosecutor package. Okay.
I approve the purchase of the Barracuda load balancer in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Sorry?
I have a motion in second, on favor, Judge Ryan. Um, zero, thank you very much, thank you, Jason. Quick question, what will this do?
Um, this piece of equipment is going to be used to, uh, it's part of the setup for the public order, for the public to be able to get in and pay their fines for costs, obviously, everything online.
Jason, stay right there for a second, we're gonna talk about this next.
And she, what's it, she?
No, Shannon didn't want to come up.
Shannon's gonna speak.
All right.
Uh, number fourteen, agenda procedure, to consider an act upon changing the procedure of the agenda and or packet distribution. Go.
Go. All right, one thing that we're looking at is kind of mirroring what the city of Amarillo does, uh, they, they post their backup items that, that items that typically get informed. They posted a lot of that, all, all of it maybe, I don't know, they post some of all of that online with agendas. And so one thing that Commissioner Vee has suggested is that we move to do something like that, uh, with the, with the county's backup items. And the, the only thing that really would change is that Shannon has uh, agreed to be our scanner person, where she can scan in packets, or what could be scanned in out of packets. And she sent that over to us, we're looking up on the website, six, seven days, so it's a website, and we did, did look at uh, going in close, and I'm trying to uh, break with the.
Yeah, well, we were thinking, Commissioner Vaughn, procedurally, you were just testing it, so certainly, thank you, Jason and Shannon, uh, we were just testing it, of what, what does the scanning process look like? Um, Shannon, keep me honest here, the idea is to still email out that agenda, just like she does today, to say, here's the agenda for court coming up, you know, Monday, but in that includes all the packet. Now, I know several of us get an actual packet form, and I certainly think for everyone uh, on the dais up here at Marilla, would certainly still like the paper form, and anyone that still gets a paper form, we're not suggesting that we take that away, but over time, you may find that you don't need that paper anymore, because it's now in your email with all the backup. So, um, the main change is that nothing's changing right out of the gate, the idea behind it was just to increase kind of transparency, uh, certainly echoing and helping with county clerk keeps us all in line and all of our documentation, but, but that was really the idea. And so the big takeaway is that no one is getting rid of their packet, if they like their paper packet, but over time, as you find that you get all that, you get email, you're gonna think, I don't, I don't need that anymore. And of course, the end goal is to save dollars and save paper and all that good stuff, quit killing trees.
This question probably, yeah. For the Open Meetings Act, all we have to do is publish the agenda, is that right?
That's right.
So no one can come back and say, okay, you didn't give me all this stuff, so you did not publish, correct?
But we won't have the rest of our act, probably.
No, not for that, but if, if we do go to this method, if we don't put all the back, it does not all the options. Can't someone go back to, you didn't give us all that, so.
They're not gonna have that. No, they're not gonna have it, fully, we're not getting something that would not, obviously, I don't.
Yeah, no, we're just, we're not, we're not gonna do this, we're just gonna do it.
This is actually.
Maybe.
It's a different.
So you may just see a test run over the next couple commissioners' court, um, and so forgive us if it's not perfect at the first couple of times, and so you'll see that for Shannon directly, and she'll scan that all in, email it out as she does today, send it to Jason's team, and they're the, the team that actually uploads it. Uh, so the IT department will be the one that uploads it on the website, so that process will stay the same, and you'll get your package just like you do today. But as time evolves, if you'll just kind of take an internal look and say, do I still need the packet, or is this what I need? And then let Shannon know if you no longer need that, I'm sure she would be tickled to death to not pay so many packets.
We don't know why we, we, yeah, we, I'm.
We would still need the paper.
Right, right.
Unless we put the agenda on this.
Yeah, and I'm not advocating for the commissioners, or I certainly know up here, we're moving and, and making notes on the documentation, but I know that several departments get them as well, um, some packets, so we'll, we'll see how this evolves over time, but you'll see that as a test run.
Another concern I have is, uh, we get the, uh, leave a status. So if we terminate somebody, do I need?
So you doubt that would be part of.
It's, it's in our record, it's, it's public record in our office.
It is public record.
Yes, it is.
As long as it's public record too, I guess it's.
But, but the issue, or I don't really have an issue with it, but my concern is, so, or I'm just maybe a question, but, so you're gonna put the original items that we received for backup along with the agenda out on the web, is that correct?
Anything that would go in this packet.
Okay, just so that the people looking at it understand that not everything that you, I mean, I know it should go along with the minutes and everything, but, um, we currently, and I had sent out an email a while back, but sometimes we have a problem getting an original, a, a document back with all the original signatures, so it's not, you know, and I know that this is just the beginning part of it, but just something to kind of look forward to, that if you're gonna, so you've got your original stuff, and then you've got people who bring stuff to court, because they, they maybe don't have it prepared before they bring it, and so it's just, it's really not a.
It's not the record.
It's not a complete, yeah, so it's not a record, so I don't know if that's a, something you would put on the website to say.
So maybe just a disclaimer of some type, maybe on the top of the agenda or something, say, this is not the official public county record, if you help us come up with that verbiage, I bet that's something we could put on the footer of an agenda and just have it on there always. I understand what you're saying, is that the public doesn't perceive that as the county record?
Right, that that's not, that's, because, you know, y'all may have documents that's been drawn up two weeks ago, but then in the midst, y'all look at it and say, hey, can you revise this? And so the one that actually comes to court is the, is the record.
Right.
Maybe something like, these are for discussion, uh, these are discussion topics only or something.
Right, yeah.
If you help us come up with the language, we can certainly plug that in, I think that's a good point.
I just didn't know, but if the plea be considered, well, it's old school, there are still.
I'm not gonna do that. I have a question about the, like, some of the employment items that only goes to the commissioners and the clerk. Is that for, is that not, is that?
See, that's, that's what the commissioner's request is.
Because it's not to be disclosed, or is it just nobody?
No, it's because.
Why is it always limited?
Okay, so department heads have to bring their, uh, employment items to the commissioner's court, so they have to bring those for approval. Elected officials, correct me if I'm wrong, elected officials do not, but we do submit our employment items to the auditor, who does bring them to the clerk for a final, uh, final run-through on the, do we put those with the minutes? Oh, we don't, sorry, I'm sorry, so we don't.
Are they authorized or not, I mean, should they be authorized or not?
So we're only gonna get the department heads.
We're only gonna get the department.
Yeah.
One of the court has authority of.
Right, sorry.
Because the commissioner forecasted final authority of those.
Some of those can be included because they are part of the public record now.
And they're included on the.
That's what I was getting at.
I have a question, are the commissioners required to keep these, the documents a couple of years?
Thirty, thirty-four minutes. Thirty to forty minutes.
Thirty-four.
Oh, no, there's.
I don't know what our retention policy is on any of our documents.
Maybe they were required.
Uh, there is a retention policy on that, and you've said earlier, she could probably rip it off the top of her head, Ken, but there is a retention period.
I, I keep a box every year, Commissioner, and I just leave it under my desk, and I, and I actually get that to Randy to pick it up, and he keeps track of my retention, and I sign a form when it's, so anything, he, he keeps track of it, uh, down there, I would say it's a couple of years. I have a two-year system, kind of my mental number, but I always put it in just a box, and he picks it up, and when it's time to rotate it out, I just sign a form.
The heavy burden comes back, I mean, we're the ones.
You keep that, you keep that, you can do that if you'd like, but uh, because the official record is.
Yeah, I'll just be official.
So if anybody can walk back and wants freedom of information, that's where they.
Yes.
You have to go there, but hopefully they don't go to something we have, but.
But see, all those employment.
My firm is fully go there.
Right, well, yeah, right, they can get that information, but is that something that we're, we don't want to push on the public? That's what, that's what the goal is, yeah.
It's, it's open record, I mean, it's open, so, I guess.
And every, almost everything we do is open record.
Yes.
We wanna take everything that we do.
I know, versus the inline.
The reason it's been brought to you guys is because it kind of, correct me if I'm wrong, because this involves a change, possibly a process, that it's gonna, it's gonna require.
So we'd like to do just a couple of test runs, if we can, we certainly don't need a, do we, we don't need a formal motion, or do we need that today, Ken?
I don't see any harm.
Okay. I'm trying to think of how to phrase the motion, because I.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yes, thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Jason.
Uh, I make a motion to update the procedure for the agenda and packet distribution to include the agenda and backup online at Potter County for a continued effort of transparency.
On a trial basis.
On a trial basis. What's the disclaimer? Well, we'll add that in that procedure. I'll take that as.
I'll say.
Lots of people will be, you know. All right, you second it?
I do.
Okay. Okay, can I get your second? I don't think we got it. I didn't hear that, I'm so sorry. I have a motion in second, on favor, Judge Ryan. All, all, is that, all opposed? No, did you vote yes?
I voted yes, but reluctantly.
Okay, five zero.
This is, this is my thinking, I, I think we really need to consider what, what the real purpose of a meeting is, and if you listen and read, uh, Commissioner's clerk's, a meeting is between us and your department is, it's an open meeting, people can come, anybody can come, but it's not a meeting. With the four people, and that's, unless we ask them to talk, they don't have, that's not right.
Okay, can I put the disclaimer, I mean, it's not a invitation for people to come to speak, can I just put the disclaimer, but it's. It's probably.
I think we always want to encourage public participation.
We, we want to encourage them to.
And to be educated on the topics as well. But it's a trial, we'll, we'll see, we'll see where we land.
Okay, try that, just go back to, um, number nine, um.
SOB.
The SOB.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, bearing in mind these regulations are written from nineteen ninety-six, so they're twenty years old, uh, they probably could stand to be revisited, and we will, uh, arc that as one of our projects for the coming year to, uh, take a look at what probably needs to be revamped or updated. And those regulations, be that as it may, uh, you can actually look at our current situation one of two ways, under the, under the regulations. The regulations don't expressly set any timetable for renewal application, but they do talk about a renewal application being a new application and fee. If you file an original application, you need regulations, if you file it with ten day, more than ten days, ten days or more from a regularly scheduled meeting, has to be considered for the next regularly scheduled meeting. If it's within that ten-day window, that it has to be at the next following meeting, that's where we are if we're considering this as a new application. I think you could read the regulations either way, if, if you read them as renewals are not a new application, there's not a timeframe, although if you continue to delay it indefinitely, you're probably gonna want it at court.
I read this as a renewal, the very top of it says.
Right, right.
Renewal of license in less than time.
And the anniversary date on it, it's October twenty ninth.
Right. Yes, well, I would, I would request that, uh, we, we table this, can we please?
Okay.
Yeah, now, I will, I will say, strictly speaking, that operating without a license is a ground for at least suspension, if not revocation, I would be hesitant to do that during this, uh, this deferral period that we're taking right now, I, uh, that's just legal advice, uh, but it's.
What's gonna, what are you gonna change if we just wait?
Nothing, I'm just saying, I would, uh, if, if, if somebody were to get the inclination to say, well, they're, they're operating without license right now, because their license expired already, um, whether, whether you could argue that from October to today is another matter, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that's a good argument from today until the next meeting.
I guess my question is, what's gonna change if we take the question today, wait until?
The only possibility I can think of is if something happens that provides evidence to, uh, justify denial of the license or revocation.
Or suspension.
In other words, disciplinary type evidence.
Never know.
Well, there's, there's been a request, uh, to commission a lawyer to show up in the department. Yeah.
Yeah, now, I would say, I would note, uh, one thing I noted, and, and, and the, the regulations do specifically say that, uh, any person is entitled to appear in opposition, but the, the contemplation of the regulations is that they're going to present evidence in opposition to the application. Uh, because of course, you're, constitutionally, your discretion in this regard is limited, well, fortunately or unfortunately, that matters, that's the way it is.
Your advice to the commission?
I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with waiting, uh, to hear it for the next meeting.
Okay.
I think it's, I mean, we, for the record, say, because the regulations are your regulations, I think you're free to interpret them in a manner you need to, you deem to be reasonable, and that, that question could go to the.
Thank you, Scott.
Would you feel comfortable that we're not opening ourselves up to the.
Yeah.
Legal.
Yeah, yes, yes, for the, for one thing, the application wasn't submitted until a month and a half after the last, after expiration of the prior license, so.
Right.
And it expires also.
Okay, month, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, it's already, we have a project of the employment items, number sixteen, consider an act upon following the employment items in the elections department, pending of the temporary position for Ingrid Riles as temporary deputy clerk in twenty twenty sixteen, the hiring of Monica Almador, the part-time deputy clerk for Kansville, so, but to do super eight twenty sixteen. And the road bridge department, the hiring of Josh Ray as maintenance mechanic, has a replacement for Brandon Thompson effective for super fourteen twenty sixteen. I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the informant who's providing, but, uh, I'm just stating.
Motion in second, on favor, Judge Ryan. Um, zero, two. Jail report today is, uh, five hundred and twenty-five people in our jail, eighty-seven over two hundred, we have zero eight children, it's an eighty percent ratio of felons and twelve percent of children, and Sheriff has some really great information, not going.
Do you need to have a packet? I'll get you one. Soon as I get through it, I mean, it's. Basically, we, we started looking at our, our regulations out there back in October and November, for, for jail inspection, and there were some real new rules that came down that, um, we have to check on their inmates every thirty minutes. There's a form, uh, if there, any kind of assault case, any kind of assault, any kind of bizarre behavior, we have to go by and physically play out on that every day. That's a new jail standard. We got to look into when we're reading that with the people that we have up there. So we increased our, our minimum staffing, uh, a couple of people on each shift, and to do that, we're gonna bring in people to work, and what you have behind the, the first page is the people that have been working overtime or comp time. And since the eighteen, we were, we had five hundred and twenty-five hours of overtime paid up, and a hundred and twenty-eight point five hours of comp time, and that's, a lot of that is due, like I said, to the fact that we're not being able to read that, those jail standards, uh, going around and checking on the defendants.
So, so, uh, hearing that, Sheriff, is, is that basically overall, I guess, on.
So, so, uh, hearing that, Sheriff, is, is that basically overall, I guess, on a daily basis, little animal, is it, uh, maybe looking at additional staff hired, uh?
Correct. And that's why I was, we're keeping track of this, so, you know, coming to judge if my university, while we're asking for what we're asking. Um, not only do we not, we're not making our page in the checks, we also have, right now, with the standard, with the people that we have, we usually have two officers per pod, and one of those officers is checking on my clients, trying to run people to visitation, to medical, whatever. But it's really unusual year this year as far as people being taken to the hospital. So anytime we have somebody taken to the hospital, we have to take, we have to send two people out there. And if they're admitted in the hospital, depending on which hospital it is, depends on whether we have two sit there or we have one sit there. Um, one hospital requires two people, and one is required one. So that, that's an additional person that's usually taken off of shift, who others, so we're having to replace that person. So I just throw those down and that's all. Medical is extremely time, because everybody that comes through that door has to be medically clear, and they go through their process. Then they bring them to the medical, do the process through their, the TB and all that kind of stuff, and they don't help how you wish, and everyone comes through. So, plus they have all their, the things that are housing, but they have to still do self-service as well. And, uh, then they have to go through MedPass and all that stuff, and we did that through the process. We just wanted to be, we just wanted to let you be aware of this. Uh, most likely, we're gonna have to ask some more people to come in budget time, and so, you know, I hate to do that, but it's just, you know, the only option to do this is that jail standards can come in and say, you're not meeting them, that aren't standards, and then shut them down. And then we have to find a place for five hundred and twenty-five people.
And Sheriff, this is a due regulation, I'm, what measure?
Sure, and, and we have placed a couple of years ago.
Yes, if there's anything that you can send, um, where we can, or I can research, because I'd like to read into it a little more, so if there's any, other than just the main website, which, um.
They have all their standards on there.
But if there's a particular section to this, that would be helpful, to get ready for budget discussion.
We're just trying to state, you know, our percentage of our inmates or detainees are delivered to us from the city. I mean, as far as, any, anything that's not a class C only, they bring to us, any kind of, any arrests they bring to the county, the Potter County. If it's a class C only, then they take it to rental. But they could have class C and felonies.
Eighty percent?
Um, quite more than that.
You're giving a kind of decision, if you're just judging by the percentage, yes, we deal with this.
No, and, and, to kind of touch on where you're headed, the jail is, is, it's kind of sheriff responsibility, not to. The only, the only difference in that would be the, the class C missing, and of course, that contract with my girlfriend.
They let a math break to do the top of the church, you know, bragging to everyone.
I know that, I know that these, they, uh, they give them bus passes or whatever, they even tried to get a bus stop down there, so they just. They didn't bring them up here, and we do the same thing, honestly, I mean, we don't want them, when they're released from jail, we don't want them to walk back in town. Especially, you know, people come under arrest, and I tell them, give them options where they wanna go, but we can't force them to do it in there. But I just wanted you all to be aware of that, um, like I said, understaffed in, in the scene of the park, and, and the medical booth, and medicals just, because we're on the policy of going and covering up, they're not, they're not trying to provide.
Thank you. Do you have any insurance plans to begin to be due? We have gone on working right now, this is the sheriff's office, it was, uh, for X, and that's been, and. But I think, um, off, I guess there's some training, and went down on one way street.
And there was another one?
Yeah, obviously.
He was being a punk, he was not paying attention.
Allegedly.
There is a legend.
Okay, no executive session today, uh, to the hours for next time, if you don't want, um, anything else. We probably need to have an agenda item for an update on the improvements of the January, you know, the baseball, um, that I committed to bringing back to the field, so I would follow up to make sure I could send that, either December thirty-one was the motion. And so, Shannon, I'll work with you, and you can get an agenda item that makes sense.
Okay.
Uh, and then as a question for agenda item, had, do we have an update on the fairground contract?
No, I'm just waiting to, I have not heard from Tri-State Council on the list of properties on which we're switching, that this has been submitted, like we've got this.
I'm just, you know, I'm anxious, because as more time progresses, then we are now responsible, so I don't want to create a, a deadline that we should all be working for, so that you can move on that, although, but to get that wide in the statement.
Well, if I don't hear from you, I'll let you know that we're just gonna presume that it's for I's, for cap, or state plan, it's in fact, or lit.
Right.
We can set a deadline for jail, type of issue, switch that insurance to, uh.
Or we're cutting hours off, or, or whatever that, I'm interested in. I just didn't know if you needed an actual agreement, like a, as, as, an agreement signed by both parties to do that, so it's amending that original contract.
Here's what I may do, uh, January nine, uh, agenda is request specific action from the court on those curriculations. Do the law suggest a deadline, or just, uh, we pick up there?
January ten.
And you may have it by June.
Kind of like.
Okay.
And as the, uh, Natalie Marie's reminder, uh, we are seriously looking into the, uh, strategic planning issue with, uh, county for those walking in that have been participating in those surveys, and we appreciate that. Uh, if you haven't, uh, go ahead and do that, you know, towards, uh, the allies, or areas, how we can coordinate that, and how we can, uh, discuss those issues. So if you haven't participated in the, uh, what do you call it?
Survey.
Survey.
One of them is. Okay, there's nothing else, it's fine.
I issued keys to same standard this week for the state matters, so they're ready to go in, we reviewed all the work, and we'll be doing.
Okay, and I know judges are working on providing their certificate of insurance, so I gotta email, ask if we're to send them.
Okay.